Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 8th, 2025. Our first order of business will be stand for the pledge if you're able and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we move on to public comment. Mr. Thomas Keehold asked to give comment to the county board. Is Mr. Keehold here at this point?
I'll take the call.
Thank you. Okay, we don't see Mr. Keehold this time, so we move on to the next item on our agenda. Item number four is our Economic Development Authority meeting.
I'll move to recess for economic development.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to recess. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We will call this meeting to order. Our agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes today.
I'll move the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda today. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from June 10th, 2025.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Our first item is the Rental Assistant Demonstration Program Finance Plan. Nancy, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning Nancy.
As you're aware, as we previously discussed with the, at the ADA meetings, we are looking at repositioning our public housing and we're actually in the first phase where nineteen of our units will convert here for September 1st. And today I wanted to bring forth our financing plan for the remaining fifty-six units that will transfer under a RAD Section 18 conversion. And again, the reason we wanted to do these conversions is it will definitely streamline our programming, reduce the burden of reporting requirements, and then it stabilizes that revenue that we get on our reserves. And with our capital funds right now, we have two years to spend those funds. With the repositioning, we will get the revenues coming in and they will be allowed to be saved until we actually need to do improvements. So we have a little bit more flexibility with those funds as well. We've been working with a consultant. They've developed a plan and the plan is really made up of a comprehensive needs assessments, which will identify the capital improvement plan over the next thirty years. And it included an environmental review with the state. It developed our budget and it has done the property title work necessary to convert the units. The important thing with this too, as it converts to a project-based voucher, the rents can be set 110% of the fair market rents. Currently, under public housing, they're set at 80%. So you can see we get additional revenue by adjusting those rents. And then the subsidy component that gets us to the market rent comes directly from the voucher program. All residents that are in the Breckenridge buildings and the scattered sites have the right to remain in their units, so we won't be requiring people to move out of their units and they'll continue to pay 30% of their income for the rent. And I did provide you with just a summary then of our capital funds and our reserve amounts, and then HUD has projected that out for initial replacement reserve needs. And it does show that we have adequate reserves to be in that process with HUD. So we are coming today to have you sign a resolution authorizing us to submit this financing plan to HUD for their review for that conversion process. In addition to that, there is a letter from the Blue Earth County Commissioners supporting the conversion process with us.
Thank you Nancy. Any questions for Nancy at this time? I would entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sounds good.
Looks good, lot of work, but it's been a good program so far. Appreciate all your work. All right, I have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you Nancy.
Thanks Nancy.
Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, at this time, we will move on to County Ditch 74, Continuation or Redetermination of Benefits. Good morning Craig.
Good morning.
Good morning Craig.
This is a continuation hearing for the redetermination of benefits on County Ditch 74. Are there any changes to the agenda today?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments on all parties interested in the continuation hearing for County Ditch 74, redetermination of benefits. The subject of this continued hearing is to limit to the Groenwald and Zarn properties. The order of business will be as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed viewers and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Austinson to go through the jurisdictional documents, please.
Okay. Today, we are continuing the hearing originally held on June 24th, 2025. This hearing was continued to a time and date certain, therefore, re-notification is not required. The original hearing notices were mailed on May 27th. The notice was posted before the hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located 204 South Fifth, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of Public Hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including the dates May 29th, June 25th, June 12th, all in 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 74 watershed is approximately 1,700 acres in size and located in Lyra Township. On June 24th, 2025, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority adopted the County Ditch 74 Viewer's Report for the Redetermination Benefit with the exception of the Groenwald and Zarn properties. Viewers were ordered to review the benefits for the Groenwald and Zarn properties and present their recommendations at the July 8th, 2025 County Board Meeting. At this meeting, the Drainage Authority will act on the continued redetermination benefits after hearing the viewer's recommendation and after opening the meeting for public comment. Today's comments will be restricted to the Groenwald and Zarn properties. We request the Drainage Authority adopt the findings and orders updating the County Ditch 74 Viewer's Report to include the Groenwald and Zarn properties in the benefits and damages report. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
All right, thank you Craig. Got a motion?
I will move the jurisdictional documents with one comment.
Sure.
Unless my neighbors moved, which I don't think they did, or the ditch, we're in Suresco Township yet, right? Not Lyra?
Did I say, okay? Yeah.
All right, let's get the ditch in the right township. Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I will now ask the appointed viewer staff, please come and review the viewer's report. Mark, please identify yourself for the record.
All right, good morning. I'm Mark Behrens. I'm one of the viewers that worked on the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 74. As you know, we had the public hearing for County Ditch 74 last month. The viewers build a book like this on every single system we work on. It's got everyone's acres, soil types, locations and such on the system on County Ditch 74. At the public hearing a month ago, several people brought up that they have tile on their property, their acres are tiled out of County Ditch 74. The viewers were asked to look at those two properties, the Groenwald and the Zarn property. Since that meeting, I received maps from those two parties showing that their acres are tiled out of the system. What is done on that, we don't remove those acres totally from the system, but we reduce their benefits. It depends on the system, but we reduced their benefits by 90% on their acres that are tiled out. Possibly in a big rain event, some of the water could get back to County Ditch 74. But I determined 90% of their water is tiled out and going to a different system. So the Zarn property had 8.1 acres within the watershed of County Ditch 74. It's all tiled to the south. I reduced the benefits on the Zarn property, dropped their benefits, $13,778. So they've still got benefits in the system, but they're reduced way down from what they were previously. On the Groenwald property, they've got 4.3 acres on this parcel that are tiled north and out of County Ditch 74. Again, I reduced the benefits on their property by 90%, dropped them $4,000. So there's $17,831 of benefits on 74, less than what we talked about here a month ago. Now we've got $2,262,000 of benefits on County Ditch 74. I'm happy to answer. Any questions anyone might have?
Thank you Mark. Any questions from the board at this point?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will open up for public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when your used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allocated to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the matter in front of us? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits pertaining to the Greenwald and Zarn properties? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits? Seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the county board for action.
I'd move to accept the findings in order and order the viewer's report adopted.
Second. Thank you. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the county board? This was just continuation. We went through most of it last week, so thank you Mark for following up with that. We're getting that done at this time. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That concludes our County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits hearing, continuation. All right, we will now move on to County Ditch 35 acceptance hearing. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes today.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, the purpose of today's hearing is to determine whether the two contractors for the improvements on County Ditch 35 have completed their contracts in accordance with the plans and specifications. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Blue Earth County Drainage Staff Craig Austinson to review the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Notice of this hearing was posted outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located 204 South Fifth, Mankato, Minnesota. Hearing notice was mailed on June 19th, 2025. Notice of the public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including dates June 19th, 2025. Blue Earth County Ditch 35 is located in the Mapleton Township. Its watershed is approximately 3,000 acres. Drainage Authority established the improvement on September 13th, 2022. The project was split into two bid packages awarded to Borne Key Construction and Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee. Property Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petitioned improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractors. Purpose. The purpose of an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractors completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also starts a three-year warranty period for the tile work and a one-year warranty period for the open ditch work. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the drafted findings and order approving the engineer's acceptance report for the Blue Earth County Ditch 35 Improvement Project and release any final payments due to the contractors for the project and to pay damages as shown in the engineer's report.
All right, thank you Craig. Can I get a motion to accept the jurisdictional documents?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We will now hear from the appointed engineer for this project, Mr. Chuck Brandl with ISG. Good morning Chuck.
Good morning. I've got a presentation on the project and I do have some drone footage. If specific questions come up, we can pull that up and look at it too, so. But for the final acceptance of County Ditch 35, Mr. Austinson did explain that we had two bid packages.
Chuck, are you playing again?
Yeah. Oh, no I'm not. Better?
Hey, got me plugged in these days.
One task here. And we broke it up into two bid packages, essentially one for the large pipe and grading and one for the tile work. This is something we've been doing pretty consistently. It helps us get better pricing on certain parts of the project, so. Here is the watershed map and actually, this is the original watershed map. There were some updates to that. There'll be some more updates at a hearing after this. The white area is bid package one. That consisted of cleaning a portion of the ditch downstream, part of 35 and part of ditch 95, replacing a portion of the deep open ditch with a 60-inch pipe, filling that in partway up to stop some significant erosion that had been occurring, some cleaning and minor deepening of the open ditch in the middle of the ditch, of the watershed. That was bid package one. Bid package two consisted of a 36-inch tile from the open ditch underneath Highway 22, plus a repair of a branch on the southeast portion of bid package two, and then subsequent branches to replace the system on the northeast side of Highway 22. Kruger Excavating did bid package one. Kind of a unique project in that we put a 60-inch pipe next to an open ditch, took some of the overburden off the top of the ditch and filled in the ditch because that had been causing a significant amount of erosion issues. If you recall, I believe from around 2020, 2002 to about 2018, there's almost a million dollars spent on repairing the system. So this essentially should solve those long-term repair issues. Except for rain delays, the work went fairly well. The pipe went in, we televised the 60-inch pipe, had no issues. That's one of our biggest concerns when you put in large pipe is that it could deflect. The contractor did a nice job getting that in place. Here's a couple photos of the 60-inch pipe coming in on the right, the material from the top of the ditch and filling another portion of the ditch, and then some of the ditch cleaning that was also done along the system. We did, before I finish this, there have been some concerns about the portion of the open ditch that was just cleaned and deepened. I believe we should look at this a little bit more. There's been some sloughing there. There's been a lot of material placed on top of that ditch. It wasn't part of this petition, but I know it'll get brought up and I think we do need to look at that maybe as a separate repair project. So this project was bid in March of 2023, executed in June. A lot of the work was done in late 2023, but we had final completion in September of Again, there was the 60-inch pipe, the overflow ditch, open ditch cleaning, open ditch repairs. We do have a final pay request from Kruger. The awarded contract was just over 1.4 million. The total final costs are just 1,372,251.16. There were some savings in seeding and some cross connections and tile outlets. There was a change order for some grading along the township road. The township wanted to be able to mow their road ditch and have a little bit more work done there, so we were able to work on a change order and still kept the project under the original budget. We paid 1.266,344.40. Currently due is 105,906.76. So it's our recommendation that Kruger get paid for this work and it is accepted. They have a final signed pay request. They have IC 134 saying they paid their subcontractors warranty bond and consent of surety. Because this has tile and open ditch on it, the open ditch portions would have a one-year warranty and the tile portions would have a three-year warranty. So if there is other issues that come up, we still have that ability to go back and we do have a warranty bond for that. We do recommend accepting the work for bid package one. Bid package two was Borne Key Construction. This map shows kind of the details of what was done, the 36-inch tile boring underneath Highway 22, lateral B, there was a 12-inch tile. There were some issues with this. Some of the original records were clear and the line actually needed to be bored twice under Highway 22. ISG did cover the cost for that second or original boring. Just wanted to bring that up. It is in our summary. The rest of the system, there were some also issues on the final grading. This spring and summer, when we've had some rain events, we have looked at that and everything should be resolved, at least from what we could see, there wasn't significant ponding in those areas. But that was brought up a couple times and there was some rework that was done on the grading over the tile. Here's some pictures of construction, the boring under Highway 22, pipe going in, crossing some electrical lines. And that is actually another issue that was, I'll just bring it up, there was a public comment this morning, I believe, Borne Key Construction owes a private contractor for some electrical work that really was outside of our contract that they damaged. I believe that hasn't been paid yet, but we will follow up on that. There is an invoice standing out there on that. And then televising, we did find there was an issue with some of the tile connections that had to be fixed. That was the major issue we found in televising. So the construction timeline, again, very similar. It was final completed in 2024. Lateral B was done in October 2023. The main line was October, December of 2023. A lot of the puncher work, punchless work was done last year and then we waited till crops were out to do some of that grading punch list in 2020, late 2024. So the awarded contract was 707,840. Total costs were 849,748. That included some overrunning of seeding and some private tile connections that we were unaware of. There was a change order for the lateral B work, but we had credited 79,175 of that 81,000 for that change order. So the amount to date that's been paid is 807,270.38 with an amount due of 42,487.92. Again, all of the documentation has been turned in by Borne Key. We would recommend accepting this work because this is all tile work. It would be a three-year warranty for this work. We did calculate damages. We were able to do all of the work along the open ditch without permanent damages. We lowered the top of the ditch and kept the same top by lowering it. But there are 17 acres of temporary damages where we were grading within, outside of the buffer areas. For the tile, there was another 34 acres of temporary damages, no permanent damages. The summaries are here. The summaries are also in the handouts for landowners, including the maps. I did do a total cost summary just to show basically where we're at with everything. When you look at all of the costs, we're at 105% of what we had planned, so 5% over. We typically plan for 7% to 10% of contingencies, so I think we are well within what we planned for the project and very close to what the original budget was, so, with a few added things that we did. As part of the project, we will change the open ditch, so the deep open ditch essentially becomes a shallower open ditch and then all of the tile that was replaced would be abandoned. So the existing tile that was replaced, some of that was left in the ground that is abandoned. We would like that as part of the record that that is abandoned and the new system is the public system. We do have an AS Bill completed that will be submitted pending the final approval and any comments. So it is our recommendation that the project has been, that both bid packages are completed and that the project should be accepted at this point pending any comments from landowners. Thank you.
All right, thank you Chuck for the acceptance report. At this time, I will now open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. As stated before, the comments are expected to be civil and respectful and limited as five minutes. Bob will give you a one-minute warning when your time, allotted time is used and we will keep comments to the acceptance hearing on 35, County Ditch 35. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the acceptance hearing for Ditch 35? Please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 35 Improvement Project, please come to the Last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 35, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action. I get a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the reports for the final payment issued to the contractors. Any discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 35 acceptance hearing. Now we'll be moving on to County Ditch 16 Outlet Hearing. Welcome to the County Ditch 16 Hearing for the proposed petition to outlet additional acres. Agenda review.
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Bob. Have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Second for, got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, today's purpose of this hearing is to present both the engineer's report and drafted viewer's report of the final proposed petition to outlet the additional acres into County Ditch 16 and to allow for public comment for the proceeding. The order of business will be as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents and we will hear from the appointed engineers and viewing staff and then we will reopen a public hearing for public comment. I will now ask Craig Austinson for the public records to be read into record.
Okay. Hearing notices were mailed on June 12th, 2025. A notice was posted hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located 204 South Fifth, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of a public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press on June 19th, June 26th, and July 3rd, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 16 watershed is approximately 2,200 acres in size and is located primarily in Mapleton Township. A petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 16 was received on County Ditch 16 was received on September 20, 2024. On October 22, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brown of ISG to review the petition. The Drainage Authority also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a report and recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. On May 27, 2025, a signed financing order. The Drainage Authority set a hearing date for July 8, 2025. At today's final hearing for the proposed petition to outlet lands, additional lands into County Ditch 16, we asked the Drainage Authority to consider the approval of the drafted or subsequently amended financing order and order the approval granting the petition for additional acres to outlet into County Ditch 16.
Thank you, Craig. Can I get a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents?
I'll move.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I will now ask the appointed engineering staff to come forward, and please review the engineer's report. Good morning, Jacob.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. We're going to be going over the County Ditch 16 hydraulic analysis for those added acres. Again, I'm Jacob Mueller. I worked with Chuck Brandl on this project. He was the signing engineer. A little bit of information on this system. CD 16 primarily lies within Buford, Mapleton, and Danville Townships. It drains a little under 4,400 acres, and it's predominantly used for agriculture. A map you can see here on the screen shows the layout of the CD 16 watershed. The system as a whole contains really only one piece of public infrastructure, being the main line open ditch. That spans from its outlet, the Cobb River, to the north, reaching the northern portions of the watershed. The area that we're going to be looking at today is on the border of the CD 16 watershed and the CD 35 watershed in Section 11 of Mapleton Township. A little bit on this, the property that we're looking at is the mass-up property. It's 12.65 acres in total, and the petition would involve removing 5.62 acres from the CD 35 watershed and placing those towards the CD 16 watershed. On our measurements, we're measuring about 5.1 acres, but ultimately, it's a very small discrepancy. A bit of a closer look here shows that the red boundary is the current watershed boundary between CD 35 and CD 16. We can see the area in yellow is the area that's currently in CD 35 and would be contributed toward CD 16. Backing up a little bit here, there's four crossings that would essentially drain this added acreage. We've labeled those as crossings 1, 2, through to 4. Looking at the hydraulic capacity of those, we used Manning's equation to calculate the capacity of these crossings, utilizing the as constructed condition, essentially meaning that the culverts are in a fully functional condition as they were originally constructed. This involves three field crossings, and then the final outlet being the 597th Avenue Crossing. When we look at the reductions in available capacity for all landowners in the system, at the most immediate outlet, crossing 4, there's approximately a 0.55% reduction in available capacity, and all the way at the system outlet, there's a 0.21% reduction in available capacity. Again, this doesn't, from what we're seeing, this doesn't change the character of any of these culverts. None of them are reduced by even a hundredth, except for the first culvert in terms of drainage coefficient. So ultimately, the addition of that 5.62 or 5.16 acres from the CD 35 system to the CD 16 system will have negligible hydraulic impact on the available capacity of the drainage system, and we believe that this addition will slightly increase total runoff and that there's additional acres, but will not increase overtopping frequency of downstream roads or crossings nor impact flooding within the CD 16 system. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob at this point? Okay, hearing none. I will now ask the appointed viewer staff to please come to the podium and review the draft viewer's report. Morning, Mark.
Good morning. I'm Mark Behrens. I'm the viewer that worked on this petition. I've handed out some maps and also some spreadsheets that have all of this information that I'm talking about within it. Mass-up, they're petitioning, acres are just a tad different, but we've got 5.1 acres that are petitioning from County Ditch 35 into County Ditch 16. On a petition like this, there's three things that come into play. There's payment of an outlet fee. Basically, those 5.1 acres have to buy into the adjoining system. The second piece of it is we have to determine benefits for those 5.1 acres going into the adjoining system. So going forward, those five acres help pay for repair and maintenance on County Ditch 16. And the third piece of it, we'll talk about here in a bit, is those 5.1 acres, the benefits on those acres that are currently in County Ditch 35 should be reduced because their water is going over to 16. That piece of it will reduce the benefits on those acres. I viewed the property on January 28, 25. Little background, County Ditch 16 was established in 1907. There's 2,200 acres within that system, $3.6 million worth of benefits. County Ditch 35 that they're petitioning out of was established in 1914. Redetermination was done in 2022, and also the improvement that you just heard talked about. There's right at 3,050 acres within that system according to the redetermination info and $7.3 million worth of benefits. Landowners within County Ditch 16 have paid for the establishment and the repair and maintenance of that system since 1907. I received information from the Drainage Department, about 145,000 has been spent on that system in the last 10 years. That doesn't account for the establishment of the system or money that was spent previously. So the first piece of it is the outlet fee, these acres buying into the adjoining system. I've worked on petitions. We've had anywhere from $20 outlet fee to a $350 an acre outlet fee. It depends on the system that they're petitioning into. I looked at the money spent, looked at the adjoining system, determined that there should be $100 per acre outlet fee into that adjoining system. So those 5.1 acres would have a $510 outlet fee into the adjoining system. Also, benefits to the property, so that going forward, those acres help pay repair and maintenance on the adjoining system. Currently, part of that mass-up property is within County Ditch 16. The average benefits on those acres that are in there are $2,762 an acre. So I determined that those 5.1 acres petitioning into 16 should use that same benefit number. So the 5.1 times the $2,700, we would add $14,086 of benefits to the current benefits that are in 16, so that those acres pay more going forward on the repair and maintenance of 16. And the benefits reduced on those 5.1 acres, I believe we'll talk about that in a separate piece of this. But at this point, the outlet fee and the benefits added are what I've talked about here and are what are on the spreadsheet. I'll answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll open up public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the You've already previously heard, comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Bob will be keeping time limit of five minutes. We'll give you a one-minute warning, and we will only talk about issues about this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Is there anyone for the public that would like to comment on the petition of additional acreages into County Ditch 16? Last time, anyone wishing to make a comment to the petition of outlet additional acres into County Ditch 16, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for count, for action.
I'll move it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. This concludes the final hearing for the County Ditch 16 petition for the outlet of additional acreage. At this time, we will move on to County Ditch 35 Removal Hearing. Good morning. Welcome. This is the removal of benefits from County Ditch 35. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
Do I have a motion for the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The purpose of the day's hearing is to listen to the appointed engineers and viewers to give their report and receive comments from all parties interested in this proceedings for today. The order of business for the hearing, staff will review the jurisdictional documents, and we hear from the engineer and the viewer, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, Craig Osserson, to review the jurisdictional documents.
Hearing notices were mailed on June 12, 2025. Hearing notice was posted on the for the hearing outside of the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located 204 South 5th, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including dates June 19, 26, and July 3, 2025. The County Ditch 35 watershed is approximately 3,025 benefited acres and is located in Mapleton Township. A petition under Minnesota Statute 103E.805 to remove acres from County Ditch 35 was received on September 2024. The Drainage Authority attorney, Mikhail Van Brugge, of Rinkinun, reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate for these proceedings. A viewer and engineer were appointed to prepare a report on the petition. There's a separate petition to outlet the same lands into County Ditch 16, which was just, we just did previously, as per Minnesota Statute 401. A petition to outlet lands into County Ditch 16, of course, requires a separate hearing, required a separate hearing for what we did now. We are requesting approval of financing orders drafted or subsequently amended, approving the petition for removal of benefits and drafted the viewer's report, including the updated benefits and damages for County Ditch 35. Statute for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll move the jurisdictional documents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the documents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I will now ask ISG staff to come to the podium for the engineer's report. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jacob Mueller. Once again, we're looking at a petition for addition and removal. Again, all three of these systems that we're looking at are adjoining. There's two parcels that are each swapping watershed boundaries. So again, here we're focusing on County Ditch number 35. Again, Chuck Brandl was the signing engineer on this project. CD 35 is within Mapleton Township, drains a little over 3,000 acres, and again, is predominantly agricultural row crops. Here, we can see a layout of the watershed boundary. The present watershed boundary is in red. The previous watershed boundary prior to the recent redetermination of benefits is the black dotted boundary. As you can see to the north, there's been changes to that watershed boundary. We'll discuss that a little bit. Again, as you heard in Chuck's presentation regarding the improvements to CD 35, there's been some recent work on the system. The parcels that we're going to be looking at today concerning CD 35, both addition and removal, are shown in orange and yellow on this map. They are both mass-up properties, and they both drain into Branch 8 or the main line in the northern end of the watershed. This eventually paths to the south where it outlets into the open ditch, and finally at the final outlet to the south being a culvert. So a little bit of, a little bit of information here. The area, again, that we're looking at that's added is in orange on the map, and the area that's being removed is yellow on the map. So what's being added? To the north, the mass-up property is 88.25 acres in size. It's all presently within County Ditch number 57. The petition requests that 31.75 acres drain from CD 35, or from CD 57 into CD 35. These would drain into the recently improved Branch 8. The area that is removed is entirely the mass-up property, currently 12.65 acres in size. Again, as we heard, it's approximately 5.1 acres that would be diverted from CD 35 to CD 16. A little bit of a closer look at this, we can see here where those properties lay out. In the previous hearing, we discussed that yellow boundary on the mass-up property, again, 5.1 acres. This would drain, this is currently draining into the main line tile, would be removed from that. That orange area, the 31.75 acres petition, would drain into the new Branch 8. Again, we did a hydraulic capacity analysis on this. We looked at three locations, being the culvert at the system outlet, the main line tile under Highway 22, and then Branch, the Branch 8 tile outlet. These were what we found to be the most critical locations to determine capacity. Starting with the system outlet, these cumulative additions and removals, being a net of about 26 acres, resulted in an 8.84% reduction in capacity at the system outlet. When looking at the immediate outlet, being the recently improved Branch 8, there's a 16.46% reduction in available capacity. Notably with that, like I had said earlier, the watershed boundary had changed since the improvement. These acres were accounted for in that improvement tile sizing. So in the original FER for the, for CD 35 concerning Branch 8, there was a 0.63 inch per day drainage coefficient proposed for that line. This is what was designed and installed. Concerning the watershed boundary changes, even with this addition, will be, will still exhibit a 0.82 inch per day drainage coefficient. So we're still exceeding those original design goals by almost two tenths of an inch per day. So while there was a reduction, it still exceeds the original design goals of the improvement. So in conclusion, the additions and removals petitioned and associated with the CD 35 system represent pretty minor changes that will not overburden the downstream drainage infrastructure and will not deviate from the design goals of Branch 8. So ultimately, the engineer believes that this addition will minimally increase total runoff volume. There's more acres draining into the system, but it will not increase the overtopping frequency of downstream roads within the ditch, nor overburden the newly installed tile, nor increase or exaggerate flooding within the CD 35 system, again, as those acres were already somewhat accounted for in that improvement. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob from the board at this point? Thank you. At this time, we will hear from the viewer's staff, Mark.
All right. Good morning, Mark Behrens again. Did you want to keep these separate as far as the petition in and the reducing benefits, or?
We have them in separate hearings, so, yeah.
Okay. We'll continue with the first one then, as far as the reduction of benefits.
Removal, yep.
Yep. On the, we're talking about the 5.1 acres on the mass-up property. They petitioned from County Ditch 35 over to 16. We would reduce the benefits on those acres, but not take them totally out of County Ditch 35. I determined we should reduce them by 99%, not 100%. The rationale is, in a big, big rain event, possibly some of that water on those five acres could get over to County Ditch 35. So we leave them in at 1% of their previous benefits. So this, the benefits on those acres on that parcel previously were $6,998 as from the previous redetermination. $6,998 on those acres. We would reduce them by 99%, so those acres going forward would just have a $70 benefit amount in County Ditch 35. Very, very minimal. There's $7 million worth of benefits in that system. There's $7 million worth of benefits in that system. These acres would have 70 bucks, they pay a small, small, small portion of repair and maintenance on 35. So I'll quit with that piece of it, Craig?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark at this point from the board? All right. At this time, we will open it up to public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. As you've heard already, comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful, five minute limit. Bob Meyer will warn you at one minute, and we will just talk about items for this item only. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 35 petition for removal of benefits, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Last time, anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move the findings and order, and order the petition for removal granted, and the viewer's report adopted.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 35 removal hearing. At this time, we will move on to the County Ditch 35 hearing for proposal petition to outlet additional acreage. Are there any changes to the agenda today?
No, Mr. Chair.
Will be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the, both the engineer's report and the drafted viewer's report for the proposed petition of outlet additional acreage into County Ditch 35, and to allow for public comment for these proceedings. The order of business today will be as follows. The staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed engineer and the viewer, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Austinson, our ditch manager, to give us the jurisdictional documents.
The hearing notices were mailed on June 12th, 2025. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue River County Historic Courthouse located 204 South 5th, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice that the public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press on June 19th, June 26th, and July 3rd of 2025. The Blue River County Ditch 35 watershed is approximately 3,025 acres in size and located in Mapleton Township. A petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 35 was received on September 20th, 2024. On October 22nd, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Randall of ISG to review the petition. The Drainage Authority also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a report with recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. The reports have been received, and we are now ready to hold a hearing on the petition. Public hearing for the proposed petition included review of the viewer's and engineer's reports is required. On May 27th, 2025, a signed findings order of the Drainage Authority was set hearing date for July 8th, 2025. At today's final hearing for the proposed petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 35, we asked the Drainage Authority to consider the approval of the drafted or subsequently amended findings and order, and order their approval granting the petition for additional lands into outlet the County Ditch 35. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
Move the documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will now ask the appointed engineer staff to please come and review the engineer's report.
Thank you. Again, one thing I'd like to clarify here, for the additions and removals concerning County Ditch 35, we did these as a singular report, being that they were draining roughly the same area and involved the same landowners. So a lot of the information presented in the, in the hearing immediately preceding this one also applies to this hearing. Again, what we're looking at is, is the addition of approximately 31.75 acres from the mass of property currently within CD 57 into CD 35. Again, as previously noted, the capacity of the downstream system was designed with these acreages in mind, though it does not reduce the recent improvement below the original goals of design, nor does it put place any burden on the downstream outlet. So with, with that, the engineer believes that this will not increase flooding within the system, nor increase overtopping frequency of the roads. Again, a lot of the same information that was, that was presented at the hearing immediately preceding this one also applies to this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob? Okay. At this time, we will hear from Mark, Mark Behrens, the viewer.
All right, same song, second verse here again. On the petition into the system, three things happened, payment of an outlet fee, buying into that system, benefits added to the property, so they help pay going forward, and a reduction on the benefits on the acres they're petitioning out of that system. Again, I viewed this property on January 28th. County Ditch 35 was established in 1914, redetermined in '22. The improvement just got completed on County Ditch 35. County Ditch 57 that these 31 acres are petitioning out of, that was established, I'm sorry, that was established in 1920, redetermined in 2009. Since this petition got filed, the acres petitioning out of County Ditch 57, that parcel has been split into actually four different parcels. So these acres, 31.75 acres that are petitioning out, are now actually in three different parcels. So when I did the spreadsheet that you've got, it depicts those three different parcels that we're talking about. So landowners on County Ditch 35 have paid for the establishment of that system and that improvement that just got completed. I received information from the Drainage Department, in the last 10 years, there's been about 365,000 spent on that system, plus ballpark $3 million for that improvement. The payment of an outlet fee we're talking about here, those 31.7 acres would have to buy into that system. This is an expensive system per acre with that improvement, so the outlet fee is very high. The guys that are the landowners within that system helped pay that $3 million, plus the establishment of the system. I looked at the parcel directly across the road from these 31 acres, they had paid $1,770 an acre for the improvement. Other parcels in that area paid anywhere from $910 an acre up to $2,450 an acre for that improvement. So it's an expensive improvement. These 31 acres have to buy into that system. I determined that these 31.75 acres should have a one-time $1,900 per acre buy-in into that system. It's all listed on that spreadsheet there that's shown on the screen. The second piece of it, so, so those 31.7 acres would pay $60,325 to buy into that system. The benefits added to those acres so that they help pay going forward for repair and The parcel directly across the road from these 31 acres have an average benefit per acre of $2,970 per acre. So I determined that these 31 acres petitioning in should use that same $2,970 per acre. All that is listed on the spreadsheet that is shown here. There would be $94,298 added to the benefits on County Ditch 35, which currently has $7 million worth of benefits. So these 94,000 would be added to that. These 31 acres would help pay repair and maintenance going forward. And then in a bit here, we'll talk about the reduction of benefits on County Ditch 57. But these acres are petitioning from County Ditch 57 into 35. Lot of pieces, those maps hopefully help depict what's happening here. Again, I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Hearing none. I will, at this time, I'll open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a statement, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. As mentioned before, public comment is expected to be civil and respectful, be a five minute limit, one minute warning from Bob Meyer, and we'll talk about items pertaining to this issue. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on petition to outlet acreage into County Ditch 35, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Last time for anyone making, wishing to make public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
Will be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion to accept the drafted findings and orders approving and adopting the viewer's report and benefits and damages report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our final hearing for County Ditch 35 petition to outlet additional acreage. We will now move on to County Ditch 57. This is the final hearing, proposal, petition of removal of benefits and recommended benefits for County Ditch 57. Agenda review.
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Got a motion and a second for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to listen to the appointed engineers and viewers to give their reports and receive comments from all parties interested in the proceedings for today. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed engineer and viewer, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Austinson to read the jurisdictional documents into record, please.
Hearing notices were mailed on June 12th, 2025. Notice was published for this hearing outside the Blue River County Historic Courthouse located 204 South 5th, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice that the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including the dates of June 19th, 26th, and July 3rd of 2025. County Ditch 57 watershed has approximately 6,000 benefited acres located in the Buford and Mapleton Townships. A petition under Minnesota Statute 103 E.805 to remove acres from County Ditch 57 was received on September 20th, 2024. The Drainage Authority Attorney, Kale Van Birgen of Drinkyun, reviewed the petition, found it to be adequate for these proceedings. A viewer and engineer were appointed to prepare reports on this petition. There is a separate petition to outlet the same lands into County Ditch 35 as per Minnesota Statute 401. The petition to outlet plans were required, required a separate hearing. Request, we are requesting the approval of the findings and orders drafted or subsequently amended, approving the petition for removal and benefits of the drafted viewer's report, including updated benefits and damages for County Ditch 57. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Craig.
Move the documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, I will now ask ISG staff to come up and give their report. Jacob, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm Jacob Mueller. Bear with me for one second. I just need to quick get my presentation up on the screen. Sorry for that delay, thank you. We're here today, we're here today to discuss the removal of lands from County Ditch number Again, my name is Jacob Mueller, I worked with Chuck Randall on this project, he's There we go, okay. Sorry about that. Again, today we're looking at, CD 57 primarily lies within Buford and Mapleton Township, drains a little over 6,000 acres, again, predomantly farmed. The map you see in this slide depicts the watershed as a whole, in general, it drains from south to north until it hits the Cobb River. The little green dots you can see on the map are calculation points where we determine the hydraulic impacts of this removal. Again, this area would be draining into existing Branch 10, there has been no recent repairs and improvements. And then eventually gets to the mainline open ditch, and then subsequent data. The property we're looking at is the mass of property, again, eighty, a little over 80 acres. The petition would involve removing 31.75 from CD 57 into CD 35. Here's a bit of a closer look on that. Again, as Mr. Behrens noted, that property has been split and involves instead portions of three properties. The acreage and hydraulic impacts remain the same to the CD 35 system and CD 57 system regardless. Again, we use managed capacity. We looked at the system outlet, all the way to the north, the Branch 10 outlet where it outlets into the, the mainline tile, and then the immediate outlet being the closest point of tile in Branch 10. So at the, at the total system outlet, there's a .51% increase in capacity, and at the immediate outlet in Branch 10, there's a 15.62% increase in ability for, for the, the users who utilize that existing branch. So ultimately, the removal of this 35, 31.75 acres from the CD 57 system will not exaggerate flooding nor increase volume to the CD 57 system. It may result in some slight reductions in ponding in those immediate areas, but ultimately, we don't think that this is going to have any major impact to the system, being that it's such a small portion of the system. So impacts, if any, are anticipated to be reductions in flooding and benefit to the CD 57 system. Thank you. Let me know if you've got any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob at this point? Thank you. Now we will hear from the appointed engineer, Mark, or appointed viewer at this point.
All right, thank you. The 31.75 acres are currently in County Ditch 57, petitioning into 35. County Ditch 57 was redetermined in 2009. These three different parcels that are within County Ditch 57 currently have 113 and a half acres benefited to County Ditch 57, with 61,000 worth of benefits on the three parcels total. There's 31.75 acres petitioning out. The benefits that are currently on those 31 acres would be reduced by 99%. Like I said earlier, we leave them in there at 1% just in case some of that water in a big rain event could get to 57. So we're reducing those benefits on the 31 acres by 18,110. The net benefits, remaining benefits for those three parcels on County Ditch 57 would be 43,142, split between the three parcels. Happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open it up for public comment, and for the sixth time, if you have any comments, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments civil and respectful, it will be a five minute warning with a one minute, five minute timeline with a one minute warning. It will be a five-minute warning with a one-minute, five-minute timeline with a one-minute warning. And we'll be talking about anything on this item. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch fifty-seven petition for removal of benefits, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Last time anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium. Hearing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move the approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the County Ditch fifty-seven petition for removal of benefits. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our public hearing for County Ditch fifty-seven petition for removal of benefits. Is that all of our ditch stuff for the day?
That is it.
All right, thank you, Chuck, and your staff, Mark, and your staff for all the hard work. We appreciate it. We are just going to take a ten-minute break and let the room change out. And we'll be back to start with number eleven, Public Works. Ten twenty, we will return.
Yeah, are the bathrooms back in order?
Apparently should be.
Yeah, I can use mine.
All right, welcome everyone back to our board meeting. Item number eleven, Public Works. Ryan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I know we've got a lot of work to do here today, so I'll try to keep this relatively brief. The first action item is consideration of awards for State Project number zero zero seven six forty zero zero eight. This is for the County State Aid Highway forty slope repair project that's eighty percent federally funded through a competitive grant that we applied for and were successful in receiving. The engineer's estimate, this one was a pleasant surprise, was three hundred and eighty-one thousand seventy dollars. And the low bid from R and E Enterprises came in at two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Thirty-five point three four percent under the estimate. Holtmeyer Construction came in eighteen point three under the estimate. Mathewitz came in thirteen point one nine under. And Newman Excavating came in six point eight five percent over. With that being said, I would recommend award to R and E Enterprises of Mankato.
Move the approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the slope repair. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second action item in your packet is consideration of State Project zero zero seven zero seven zero zero seven. That is for the two thousand and twenty-five Highway Safety Improvement Program project. The H SIP funds are also federal dollars that are available to us competitively and cover project costs for safety improvements out of our County Road Safety Plan. So we put together primarily intersection improvements with some flashing LED stop signs, stop bar painting, things of that nature. So with that, we received three bids, safety signs being the low bid. Our engineer's estimate was two hundred and fifty-one thousand fifty-seven dollars sixty-five cents. Safety signs came in considerably higher than our bid amount at three hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents or fifty-two point nine nine percent over the estimate. WW came in sixty-four point nine three over the estimate. And Mini MPM came in eighty-one point seven nine over the estimate. These things are kind of hard to estimate because it's a lot of spotty work around the county, and it's a lot of mobilizing, moving around. It's not quantity production type of work. Fortunately, we did send this through MINDOT and did receive approval for advancing the project. So with that, I would recommend award to Safety Signs Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Action item number three is consideration, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-four Public Works Department Annual Report. I'll be relatively brief on this. On the third page end is a summary of the county road total mileage, four hundred and twenty miles of county state aid highway, twenty point six four miles of municipal roadways, and three hundred and two point three six miles of county roads. There's a breakdown of the construction allotments for each of those separate accounts, as well as the maintenance allotment, as well as a provision for unallocated costs and depreciation adjustment. This has been certified and will be sent to the MINDOT for their receipt once the county board approves the report. But we could jump to, this might lose you here, Bob. It's page two B is about ten pages later on in the report. But there's a summary of the major road and bridge work items provided. I won't read through that due to, you know, we've got some time constraints. There's a map of the projects and where they're at within the county a couple pages later. And then what's labeled as page eleven, but it's much later in the document, probably on the twenty pages after. We have a summary of the expenditures. So for snow and ice control in two thousand and twenty-four, we spent nine hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. For construction, we spent eighteen million sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. For engineering, one million six hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Four hundred and eighty-seven thousand nineteen dollars for right-of-way. For building and equipment, a capital outlay, one million three hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. Okay? And then I'm going to jump almost to the end of the document, the last couple of pages. There's some pretty easily digestible content where we have some charts from the different fund sources and how they contribute. Let Bob catch up with me. But I'll talk just a little bit. The breakdown, we didn't have any real federal. Yeah, we've got a breakdown. The color's a little hard to read and it's the way it copied. But breakdown of our state aid maintenance, state aid regular, state aid municipal. Our local and road and bridge obviously is contributing significantly with the local option sales tax. And then there's a table below it that breaks out those allows. There we go. And then the subsequent page is an expense breakdown to show we have very little administration cost. Most of our budget, seventy percent, is spent on construction, and then twenty-nine percent is spent on maintenance. On the next page, a little bit of the construction breakdown. Ninety-three percent goes right back into the project. Seven percent is personnel and engineering and right-of-way and things of that nature. And on the maintenance side of it, thirty-five percent is on services, two percent on equipment, and then sixty-three percent on contracts and supplies. There's a, last page provides us two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four department-wide expenditures. You can see where I think it's probably the third highest in history, obviously wrapping up some pretty significant projects. With that, I would request approval of the two thousand and twenty-four annual report.
Move the approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the annual report. Any discussion? It's a very good report, Ryan. We know you guys put a lot of time and energy in putting that together. So thank your staff. We unfortunately spent a few minutes on it, but that's the world we live in, so. But it's there for our looking at and referencing, so appreciate it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the Public Works Annual Report.
Thank you. The next action item, per consideration of approval of the two thousand and twenty-four Parks Department Annual Report. This report, very similar to past year. Park improvements, restoration was done in the Williams Nature Center and the Bray Park cabins. The Duck Lake caretaker residence received a new garage built by the Parks Department. Within this report, page number one, but it's probably about five or six pages in, the two thousand and twenty-four Parks statistics, we can just cover quickly. Total revenue of two hundred and thirty-one thousand sixty-five dollars and ninety cents collected from all parks, six thousand eight hundred and nine total camping nights, and one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine online reservations made, one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars seventy cents total boat rental, and ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars of wood sales with ninety-seven shelter reservations made. I know we're pushed. There's a little bit. There's similar content as there is in our Public Works Annual Report with respect to camping and reservation revenues, pretty consistent with two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two, even back to twenty-one. They're kind of neck and necks. It's remained consistent. Boat revenue is pretty minimal. It's fallen off in the parks. Couple of the caretakers have stopped doing it. It's a lot of hassle for very little revenue. It costs us to buy new boats for people to rent. Wood sales has been strong. With that, there's also within the park a breakdown of the caretaker's income as well as the camping by the week. With that, I would request approval of the two thousand and twenty-four Parks Department Annual Report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the annual parks report. Any discussion, questions? Again, very well put together piece. I know your staff spends a lot of time putting it together, so thank you for that. There's no other comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, action item number five, consideration of MINDOT contract number one zero six zero two four nine for federal participation for preliminary engineering to design a shared-use trail and sidewalk along County State Highway twenty-seven and two hundred and eleventh street in the city of Eagle Lake. The city applied for federal funds to cover their cost, I'm sorry, their engineering expenses for this trail expansion project that we've entered into and intent to cross-participate agreement on. So with the city's award of these federal funds for the engineering costs, we as the delegated contract process agreement holder with MINDOT are required to carry that contract and oversee the expenditure of those funds. So that's what this agreement is between MINDOT and the county for us to administer those funds. So with that, I would recommend approval of this contract.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the contract for engineering and design for sidewalk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the next action item is consideration of a resolution for agency agreement, SP zero zero seven zero nine zero 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 six for preliminary engineering for this project. Resolution needs to be provided along with the agreement. I would recommend approval of the resolution.
I'll move that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for MINDOT contract one oh six zero two four nine. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The last action item that we have in the board packet is consideration of approval of an agreement between the city of Eagle Lake and the county as a project sponsor agreement. So this agreement, I wanted to make sure that we had something to document the responsibilities between the county and the city and us receiving this money and expending it for them and the obligations that both parties have. This, I believe, was supposed to go in front of the city council last night. And to my knowledge, I have not heard any updates, but we had anticipated that it would be approved by the city last night. We would approve it today. So with that, I would request approval of the project sponsor agreement between Bluewood County and the city of Eagle Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agreement. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Project updates, County State Highway eighty-two Victory Drive. The drainage work has been completed. The northbound lanes are being paved this week. Southbound pavement will begin later this week or into next week. And then the work on the traffic signals and underground conduit and signal bases is underway. So there is some pavement going down out there. There's still a little bit of aggregate base that needs to go in. We've had some trenches open when rained significant volumes. We've got to do some correction there, but it's moving along. It's good to see the pavement going in.
Yeah.
When do you think the main and Victory will be opened?
It looks like it could be.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work left to do with the trails and the signals. I mean, all of that's got to come behind the pavement, obviously.
Okay.
And I mean, we'll take a look at whether or not it'll be beneficial to open that segment prior to the rest of the project. But it's a relatively short piece to the north that has to be done. And like I said, all the lighting kind of has to be done together, the striping. You know, I mean, it requires additional mobilizations for the subcontractors. So we're still, appear to be tracking to get it open in August.
All right.
County State Highway twenty-nine Bridge Replacement Project, the road is paved. Turf establishment is completed. Guard rail is starting today, and the road should be reopened by the end of the week. So that's a good one to get done. That was a federally, a federal aid project where we received some competitive federal funds for that project as well as some state funds. County Road one eighty-four box culvert replacement. The pavement should be completed this week. The road will be reopened by the end of the week as well. And then on ten from the West County line to Casada twenty, R and E is still focusing on that segment from thirty-two to twenty with drainage work and shoulder widening. R and E has also started grading for the curve realignment at the bridge, and we're anticipating the bridge replacement will begin in early August. The overlays have been completed, so we'll be finalizing that contract in the coming months. County State Highway five from Riverfront Drive to Summit, the design is progressing well. We're still working through some issues with Golden Mink with respect to some design elements of a retaining wall where we have the existing retaining wall is being pushed back behind the sidewalk. And then it gets to be the issue with the conflict with the foundation of the houses that are very close to that right-of-way line. But the other reminder I have, we do have an open house meeting today to gauge public acceptance or comment on a proposed roundabout option. So that'll be today, four to six P M. at the Public Works Department. I would invite you all to attend that. County State Highway fifteen and twenty-eight in St. Clair, the contractor, BCM, intends to begin work on August fourth on Shallow Drive, which is a city street. Work on twenty-eight North is scheduled to begin late August, and then work on fifteen Main Street. If their parts and stuff becomes available, they'd still like to tackle a little bit of it yet this fall. But I think they're tentatively planning on just beginning it in April of two thousand and twenty-six.
But they will be doing some considerable work there this summer.
Twenty-eight to the north, so that north segment going out of town. By the post office for construction this year.
All right. A lot of confusion over there with what's going on. Everybody says nothing's happening this year, and I said, no, something's going to happen. There's barrels sitting all over and flags. Something's going to happen this year.
Been waiting to get their schedule, and I think we just got that last week, so.
Okay. So the post office road will be worked on, and then they may even start the main drag if they can get the supplies.
They may.
Okay.
That'll be to be determined.
Otherwise, it's set for next spring.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
County State Highway forty slope repair work is expected to begin this fall now that we've had the contract awarded. Maintenance activities update. We started our maintenance gravel hauling today with Max Johnson out of La Center. One round of striping has been completed by Sir Lines a lot. We'll have them come back after we finish seal coating operations and get those roads touched up. Recycled asphalt production crushing has been completed in the prying pit. Crews replaced a twenty-four inch by one hundred and sixty-foot long tile at Bray Park that was switched from corrugated metal that rotted out to high-density plastic. It was underneath the boat landing pavement, so they're working on that as we speak. So unfortunately, that happened during the Fourth of July and impacted how much parking we had at Bray in the boat parking area. We're patching roads, and we'll start shouldering this week. And we should start seal coating the following weeks. And then the crews are also shoulder cutting, wrapping up, mowing out the entire right-of-way in the northern third of the county will start later this month. And then we'll also be spraying herbicide to be focused on trees and brush. Thistles are going to be, going to seed, and a wild parsnip is starting brown, so we'll plan to fall spray those thistles again. Another item for board information is we received a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Carbon Reduction Program grant for the purchase of two more EV pickups. We've been awarded one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of CRP funds by the MAPO for the purchase of those. That will cover eighty percent of the purchase price for those pickups. Those pickups will replace two existing gas pickups, and the local matching funds are already included in the budget. So the cost to match that eighty percent to twenty percent local is included.
Are you happy with the EV truck you've got so far?
It, is it doing what it needs to do for us? Yes. There's limitations. What we found is that supervisors who take it home and aren't in the shop frequently enough during the days to get it to recharge, so the guys that take it home and they're out on the road, it doesn't work.
It's problematic, okay?
I drove it for about two or three months, and there are some limitations when you have to do long trips, and it's just either you have to pad more time in. But I think we've been using it in the engineering department. We've been using it in maintenance for routine daily work. We've been using it in maintenance for routine daily work, and it's been working for that. And so our intent is we would likely give one to our shop foreman and the other one, because he's in the shop more often, so the vehicle can charge. And then another one likely to one of our engineering technicians who's, you know, the vehicle comes back every night and it's charged back up overnight.
Makes sense.
I support what we're doing, but if it doesn't fit our needs and doesn't work for us, I don't want to be replacing gas trucks with something that isn't going to serve our needs. I mean, I just, I support the efforts, but we need it to work for us.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why buying this first one was really nice, because we could kind of gauge, okay, this will work for so-and-so in the role that they do in this type of work, but it doesn't work for that.
Sounds like you're on top of it.
Thank you. And then last but not least, I'm going to be relatively brief with the dam update, because you're going to hear a lot of this from BAR during our work session here later. But I'll talk about the bridge updates. On May 27th, we participated in a call with TKDA. Grading the west side of the bridge approach is needed for soil, the soil boring equipment that was done. Braun got a contractor to do it for them. TKDA has been coordinating with MINDOT to discuss scour and arming, armering calculations, and MINDOT is comfortable with TKDA's approach to the project design. They're also evaluating areas and sizing of the substructure units and piers. They're going to be pretty massive. Center span has grown to 350 feet long, which is tremendous, and the continuous steel girder beams are going to be 11 feet tall. So we're talking, and they're going to have to meld it in the middle. So we're talking about an immensely huge bridge structure. We'll talk about why it's grown to that in our work session. A lot of it is tied to the river calculations. I think Tom can do it much better justice than I can from BAR Engineering. On June 17th, we participated in a project management team meeting with TKDA. They've been reviewing the grading plan for constructability and the delivery of those immensely large beams, the bridge. Again, they'll have to be spanned, and they'll have to be spliced back together at the center. They're showing a temporary grading plan for conveyance of those beams and getting the grain set so that it can be constructed. Remaining soil boreings were underway, and then TKDA is working with Olson-Nelson, ONE Engineering. They're both actively working on the superstructure design together, and this is somewhat of a peer review process so that there's two different firms collaborating on the design as a checks and bounds and make sure that it's.
It's good idea.
Yeah. They're hoping to submit preliminary plans for the bridge in July from MINDOT approval. Hoping to see that in early August. Another item that came up is MINDOT Cultural Resources Unit will conduct the Section 106 review process for the bridge that will eliminate some work scope from our contract with TKDA for their consultant, the 106 group. Hoping that that is relatively quick, and there's some benefits to having the state do it because of some programmatic agreements that are in place with all these other federal agencies. Their authority through FHWA kind of extends into other agencies. So we've got some benefit there. Another item, just for the board information, we discussed the pier design, and the group agreed to forego the curved hammerhead design, which was similar to what the previous bridge was. It's maybe more aesthetically pleasing, but we had decided that we would prefer to go with a tapered hammerhead design on those piers where they extend out from the actual shaft, where the head goes out to support the beams. It'll be more of a tapered. We wanted to differentiate this bridge from the previous bridge, and also the tapered hammerhead is more cost effective for construction. On June 23rd, I discussed the bridge project funding with MINDOT, and coordinated our FHWA funding and expenditures. On July 1st, we participated in another call with TKDA and Braun. It seems like the bridge abutments and piers now can be undriven H piles in lieu of the massively drilled foundation units that we had initially thought because we've gotten the piers out of the span of the river. So that's the benefit of lengthening the span of the bridge is that we get those piers and their foundations out of the river channel, so we should not have scour issues if the river channel stays put. And then really, the rest of it is dam update. I think the item I really wanted to talk about in the dam update is item number, find it here. There we go. H, the Temporary Stabilization Determination Memo for the Dam Power and Generation Mechanics was issued on June 16th, 2025, which is attached to the back of this. It should be following in your board packet. County staff had provided documentation of powerhouse generation components for FEMA for considering eligibility for reimbursement. Upon their request for further details, we provided them with dates of the county's assumption of the FERC license and the ownership of the hydro equipment previously owned by Eagle Creek Renewable Energy. FEMA denied the county request for funding specifically for the facility's powerhouse, tainer gates, and substation which allow the dam to generate hydroelectricity. We have 60 days from the issuance. The appeal date is due August 15th, 2025. FEMA cited the following issues. November 25th, 2024, we notified them that the tainer gates and powerhouse were inoperable at the time of the incident due to the 2019 and 2020 floods, and then the subsequent Eagle Creek lease termination. April 14th, a FERC license surrender application stating the county elected not to repair the powerhouse components and leave it non-operational. The Excel substation is private property, so that's not eligible. And then on June 5th, FEMA notification that the applicant must provide documentation showing work that was its legal responsibility and the facility components were active at the time of the incident or were only temporarily inactive. We could not provide that documentation because, again, we surrendered the license and we weren't going to make it active. Again, that was our intent. With that, FEMA's analysis cited that to be eligible for the public assistance funding, the work must be the legal responsibility of the applicant, so that takes out anything at the Excel substation or private property. To be eligible for the PA, the facility must be in active use at the start of the incident period or temporarily inactive. The facility was not active. Or nor did it plan to become active again. They go on to state that the applicant has not determined, demonstrated that the facility's powerhouse or tainer gates were in active use or temporarily inactive at the start of the incident period. Provided pre-disaster reports and correspondence with the applicant confirmed that the facility's powerhouse and tainer gates were not in active use at the start of the incident period due to the damage sustained in 2020. The county board applied to surrender the facility's license exemption for power generation and voted to demolish and remove the facility, showing that the applicant does not intend to begin use of the facility within a reasonable time. As a result, the application, the applicant has not demonstrated that the inactive powerhouse and inoperable tainer gates were an eligible facility. Challenging the FEMA findings will require significant coordination between myself, our staff, the administrator, attorney, and BAR Engineering. Again, we're in a position where we're not confident that challenging it will result in a different determination. The appeal may have a possibility of becoming a technical and legal challenge. The frustrating thing about this one is that we've learned that this determination also precludes reimbursement for removal of about 535 cubic yards of sediment that came into the powerhouse and filled the powerhouse during the flood. So we had hoped to get some funding to clean out that sediment that could go towards the total project cost. So that is, that's a hit. That's very frustrating to us, and, you know, our argument with FEMA is that you have to go through the powerhouse to get into the Amberson structure and to evaluate the safety of the structure. You can't have four feet of sediment immailed in there. But again, I think we're sensing a turn in FEMA certainly with recent changes, and I think we're finding it challenging for anything that doesn't fall in line with their guidance documents. So with that, I would like some board discussion and direction for staff on how the board would like to proceed with this matter.
So we were trying to get them to pay for some of the stuff that was operable. It's not operable, so I think challenging that would be, wouldn't make any sense.
We thought maybe there was a window where we could at least put the information out there.
I appreciate the effort, but at the end of the day, I think, yeah, it wasn't operable when we, when it got damaged. We didn't have any intentions of making it operable again, so. I think the run was worth it, but I don't think I'm willing to chase it any further. That's just my great opinion.
The sediment removal is the one that burns me a little bit yet.
Well, because that was part of the disaster, in my opinion. Whether we're going to get it going again or not, that needs to be removed.
Right.
So that's frustrating.
Exactly.
If we can pick out a piece and chase that, that would be great, but.
I think we've got to challenge the whole thing and go after that.
I don't know if it's worth it for that 500, what'd you say, 535?
535 yards, so even if they put 10 or, I don't know, 50 bucks a yard on it, it's not going to be, I just.
Spend more time and energy doing that, so. Just my thoughts. I'd love to hear from the rest of the board.
That's a fact.
Just adding this, and it sounds like it'll be a loser anyway.
I think it's a long shot to challenge it. Unfortunately, I hate coming to you now the second time with this situation, but.
Nope.
I think it's going to be very challenging to get it through.
Well, we knew that some of the stuff we were taking shots at was going to be a long shot. I mean, that's not a secret. I mean.
Miss 100% of the shots you don't take, right?
Yeah. So I think it was worth it. I mean, I know it's time consuming for you guys on your end, but I'm ready to stop.
Why should we be taking shots when we can be wrestling?
We could solve things that way. With that being said, I think the.
If that's enough direction, I don't know if the rest of the board wants to wait a little more.
So we've got consensus. Thank you. I appreciate that. With that, I think the rest of the report obviously has been included in the board packet, and it's talked about kind of just our project development up to the state. BAR is going to provide an overview of that so I can conclude my report and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Is BAR here and ready to go, or?
Yeah, they're out in the hallway.
All right, well, we will suspend our reports today so we can get moving just a little faster. Hope the commissioners don't mind, but.
Not a bad.
All right, county attorney update. Thank you, Ryan, very much. Megan, the report's in the packet. Did you have anything to add at this point?
No, as always, if you have any questions, please let me know, and I will do what I can to get an answer.
All right. Any questions for Megan? Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. All right. Let's move on to administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for June 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the minutes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the bills, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just informational items for the board's consideration. Again, given our budget concerns, even the recruitments indicated here are internal recruitments as we try and move people around to create opportunities to leave positions unfilled. And so, given the time constraints we have today, I'll maybe forego running through each one of those unless somebody has a specific question on this agenda.
Nope, I'm good. I can read through all of it.
All right. Item number 13 in your packet is an application for an exempt permit from the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, the Bend of River chapter. They are holding an event at the Welcome Complex in October. And so this has been reviewed and is being recommended for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for the gambling permit, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14 in the packet is an application for an exempt permit. This, sorry, I've got to get to the right page here. It's from Local Brewing Company. They have an event scheduled on August 2nd and 3rd, and so this also has been reviewed for a four-day temporary on-sale liquor license and recommending approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the temporary liquor license. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15 then is a memo regarding the Ponderosa landfill mattress fee. We would like to increase the fee. The memo describes the fact that we have historically utilized Seven Rivers Recycling as our primary outlet for recycling mattresses. Seven Rivers has encountered some hardships within their facility, which has limited their ability to take our mattresses, and so we have been utilizing two additional recyclers to keep up with the demand that we have. Those recyclers have different sets of rates, which are higher than Seven Rivers, and so the fee that we've been charging has not kept pace with those charges that we then receive. So the recommendation is to adjust our fees to $25.64 per unit effective July 14th of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for the fee increase. My only question is, and I don't know how much of a difference it makes, but why the 25.64? Why are we rounding these numbers just to make it easier at the landfill? But I'm just asking.
My guess is it relates to taxes and fees.
When it's done.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's what I'd rather see, is an even number when it's done. I don't know if we pay tax on that. That's a lever. Why won't we?
And I, I know from talking to folks in other counties, this is still a deal. So I've talked to people that are paying 50 bucks.
Oh, well. They're finding more in their dishes.
Yeah, I know, that's why you worry about is the price gets too high, we'll find more in the dishes.
There's a balance.
I'm okay with it, but we've got to cover our costs. And I didn't realize we recycled that many, 6,200. That's amazing. That's good. All right. We've heard the requests, what are the wishes of the board?
We already did that.
We did? Oh, yeah, we're in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. How many motions did we have today? All right, all seasons arena.
Sorry, we're actually done with my agenda.
Oh, we didn't have. All right, no problem. As I mentioned a little earlier, just since we have some staff and whatnot out in the office waiting to go for the next meeting, let's just take five quick minutes and try to get started by 11 or a couple minutes after for the work session. So I would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.